What's up everybody, you know it's your boy coming right back at y'all one more time. This is your boy G from O G E N T TV, straight out of Compton. You know what I'm saying, today we got a special guest, you know what I'm saying, uh, man, a young man, up and coming, you know what I'm saying? In this doggy dog, ooh, in this doggy dog eat dog world, in the world of politics, you know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying, he's a young black man, Councilman Andre Spicer, you know what I'm saying? He a councilman for which district?
Second district.
Second district.
So if you're from Compton, that's on the northeast side.
Yeah, 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 in my hood.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, northeast side, you know what I'm saying, second different, district, Santana block, Ludus Park, all that.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, I'm here today with him, you know what I'm saying, so, uh, you know, we can have a conversation about Compton. You know what I'm saying, what needs to happen in Compton, you know what I'm saying, uh, how he trying to make his, uh, his, uh, footprint in Compton. You know what I'm saying, he, he a young man, so he got a lot of years to go, and then I don't know if he gonna make it in these, but these politics. Man, hey, man, I was, man, I was, oof, I, man, I, I got deep into messing around with Mayor Asia Brown, you know what I'm saying? Helping her get elected and get re-elected, and, man, I, hey, the only thing we got about it that is fucked, you know what I'm saying? So, at the end of the, you know, I don't hold, I don't pull no punches, you know, y'all know, I call it the way I see it. We got fucked, you know what I'm saying, she got the fame and the glory, you know what I'm saying? Got, got, got to meet with Obama and all that, about, and, and everything, but we didn't get nothing. But you know, at the end of the day, we gonna keep on pushing, because we love our city, and we trying to save these kids out here. You know what I'm saying, and not only the kids, you know what I'm saying, our people as a whole. So without further ado, you know what I'm saying, up and in, introduce y'all, you know what I'm saying, the Councilman Andre Spicer.
There you go.
There you go.
Hey, good looking out, man, thanks for the platform, man, and, and getting me on the, on the podcast.
Oh, man, no problem, man, you know what I'm saying, it's like, you know what I'm saying, the way my, you know, my platform is on me. I, anybody that's doing something positive, I'm trying to deal with it.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, because I'm trying to, I'm trying to push my platform, but it ain't about mine right now, it's about you.
Yes, sir.
You know what I'm saying, so, uh, what, what, what do you, uh, how do you see Compton moving forward?
Man, that's, that's a loaded question, G, we, um, and Compton's been, uh, through a lot, bro, on, on every level.
Yeah.
On the politics, on the streets, on the business side, just community, all that, we've been, uh, we've been through.
Basically, man, basically, Compton, it's been a whole lot of crooks in Compton.
Yeah, on, on all levels.
Yeah, it's been a whole lot of crooks.
So, and, and I said this a long time ago, bro, everything that I saw going down in the streets, to me, was a direct result of what was going on in City Hall.
Yeah.
Um, and, and again, on all levels, so, the things that we do or don't get done in City Hall is reflected in the streets. And whether that be the blight, the abandoned buildings, the dispensaries, the takeovers, the, I mean, we can go down the list, you know what I'm saying? Like, all that is a direct result of what happens within here. My thought was, how we get in here to make a bigger change, a bigger impact, you know what I'm saying, and, uh, that was a struggle for me, like, you know what I'm saying, like, even understanding what politics is, how it affects our lives on a day-to-day basis.
See, what a lot of people don't understand is, for anything to get passed, you guys should have three votes.
Yeah.
See, a lot of people didn't understand, don't understand that. They think the mayor just get in the office and tell people, you do this, you do this, you do this, but she ain't got no power like that.
Nah, it ain't, it ain't like that, you know what, just because you had a mayor title doesn't mean you run the city. Like you said, you need three votes, and everybody has the same one vote, so we all got the same power per se.
Yeah, exactly.
You know what I'm saying, but if you came, get along with it.
If you could combine that one power with two more powers, you know what I'm saying, to try to get something accomplice, then, you know what I'm saying, that's for the greater good.
So, and with that being said, I, I mean, in your intro, you know, you had the issue with Asia, and I'm not an advocate for her, or I'm not tearing her down, but knowing what I know now, and, and this politics thing, man, it takes more than just her, it takes more than just me.
Yeah, without a doubt.
I like to say that I want to get all this stuff done, but if I don't have the support, the supporting staff, it don't really work out that way.
I think we need, we really need more people like you that's been out there on the streets and, and touch with the streets and, and, you know what I'm saying? What's going on in the streets, and you just getting these, you know what I'm saying, older females that's running for office and getting in office, but they ain't in tune with what the streets is doing, you know, they don't really know, they really don't even know what the city need, for real. Just like I was in, when I was in there, uh, like I remember they was trying to ban fireworks, you know what I'm saying? Ban, ban them, period, you know what I'm saying, but you, all you had was all, a lot of old people in there, you know what I'm saying? And I was like, you know, I got up and I'm saying, like, at the end of the day, all of y'all was young once, you know what I'm saying? Every one of y'all in here did fireworks, so why would you ban them from the youngsters, you know what I'm saying? They gonna do them regardless.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, so trying to ban them ain't gonna really make a difference.
But it's perspective and, uh, communication, everybody got their own perspective and idea of what that look like and how that affects the community. Whether that be like, you know, just a loud banging in the sky, or the PTSD that's, that's attached to it, or not being able to decipher the difference between M-80s and gunshots, and, you know what I'm saying? And, so, you gotta get both sides, you gotta hear both sides, you know what I'm saying?
You gotta hear both sides.
Dog, Compton is so diverse, it's not a, it's not a gang-banging city, it's not a city, a city full of senior, senior, senior citizen women. It ain't a, a city full of Latino groups of people, it's, it's a diverse community, we do a little bit of everything, so, I mean, all y'all got different points of view. Everybody see things differently, thing is, we get into office, and we be like, nigga, we want it my way, you gotta do it my way, and that be the issue. Say, yo, what y'all want to do, what y'all like, how y'all feel about doing it?
Yeah.
I came to you last week, last week, talking to you about, um, a move I want to make at, at the park that y'all from.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, it was, it was, it's to change the name of Wilson Park.
Yeah.
So, did I have to come and holler at the streets? Not, not necessarily.
That was out of respect.
It's out of respect, it's like, man, look, this y'all park, y'all up here every day, y'all dealing with what's going on, how y'all feel about us changing the name of Wilson Park? Now, in my mind, first I gotta come talk to y'all, let me see what's happening, let me see how y'all feel about it. But then other, uh, flip side to that was, okay, when, when you from the street, you understand, alright, Santana isn't built around Wilson Park, per se.
Yeah.
Like, maybe Kelly Park is, Kelly Park Crips is about Kelly Park, or Capinella Faru is about Capinella Park, you know what I'm saying? So you changing names of those, it's like.
It's a problem.
It's a problem, in this case, it's like, alright, might not be a problem, but let me see what y'all feel like.
Yeah.
Like, I hear that this group want to do it, I don't mind doing it, but let's see what this group think.
Yeah.
And it ain't just me pressing my issue on you, see, to me, this what we supposed to do, in your section.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, so it's all about the compromise, having a conversation, being open about what you want to do, and how you want to get that done. And then just kind of even taking offense to, we don't, we ain't gonna agree, we ain't gonna, we ain't gonna agree on how, how to handle things all the time. We can agree to disagree, just look at the facts, they just had a conversation.
Had a conversation, yeah.
We don't have conversations with black people, if you don't agree with what I say.
Because really, 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 facts is facts, you know what I'm saying? When, when you looking beyond the facts, or looking over the facts, then really something just wrong with you. You know what I'm saying, because I, I'm, man, I'm a factual person, you can come at me, and we can disagree like a motherfucker, but you put them facts in front of me and show me that proof.
And it's hard to disagree.
Me and me, I, I, what can I, I'm just the type of person, like, I gotta say, okay, you know what I'm saying? Because you came with the real.
Right.
Because you got some people that no matter what you put in front of them, it's just no, 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 because all they see is tunnel vision, and they got their own agenda.
Yep.
And they don't want nothing that's gonna, you know what I'm saying, come, come in the path of their agenda.
Yeah, and you got to recognize that and make sure, you know, you distance yourself away from that, that conversation, because they ain't going nowhere.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, that'd be like, ah, you know what, you feel that way, I feel this way, I, I'll holler, you know what I'm saying, that'd be the end of that. But we be going back and forth and turning the turmoil and.
You know, because really, man, it's like, there is no program for the youngsters in Compton, man. No Little League, not even flag football, no baseball at all, you know, it's, it's like, you know, you know, we got, what? Three gyms, Wilson Park, Ludus Park, and Gonzalez Park, we got three gyms.
We even got one, I think we still.
And over there at, uh, off Alondra.
Yeah, yep, uh, that one, uh, Compton and, um, Atlantic, which isn't necessarily Compton, but that's.
Yeah, yeah, but you know, that's Compton, that's Compton, all day. That's just, that's just a county claim, that.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, Limewood, that used to be Limewood Park, that's Compton, how the hell fucking Atlantic and Compton Boulevard ain't Compton?
Yeah.
And you ain't crossed over the bridge yet.
That's when you start getting into the politics, the visible lines and all that, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we got parks though, we got gyms, you know what I'm saying, so, you know, we got to figure out a way how to bring the sports back to the, we gotta bring the sports back, man.
So, my stance on, on a lot of this, dog, I, I've just got into this politics thing, before this, it was just community activism. If I want to see something done, I'm gonna go do it, you know what I'm saying, if I want to make something happen, I'm gonna go get out there and make it happen. In this case, I, I tell y'all the same thing, y'all want to see these, these, these gyms back open, y'all want to see these programs? Develop the programs, finance the programs, and force, uh, force our hands, you know what I'm saying, like, we, everybody not gonna give you nothing. You know what I'm saying, we're not gonna roll out the carpet for you all the time, sometimes you gotta take the bull by the horns and say, this is what we doing.
When you talking about the city, and you talking about, you know what I'm saying, the citizens that live within the city, and when it comes to y'all, these, man, the youngsters is the future. You know what I'm saying, if they ain't at the park playing bad sports, you know what I'm saying, having fun and learning something positive, then they gonna be in the streets.
That's, that, that, that what you just said, you said that they the future, and that's, that, and that's regardless of the positive or negative.
They the future.
It's the future, now how you want to shape that up?
That's what I'm saying.
You know what I'm saying, and that's.
You know, and it ain't no, you know what I'm saying, people ain't just, I wish I did out of money, you know what I'm saying? To just come and, and finance everything, all the, all the sports, I wish I did out of money, it'll be done, you know what I'm saying? But we don't got that kind of money, man, and the city is in a position where they can, they can, they can get them grants, or they can, they can, the city can get some money, oh.
Man, let me tell you like, let me tell you this, bro, everybody feel like the city is doing such, so great, that the city got all this money, and the city can finance all these different things. I'm gonna tell you right now, this city broke, this city broke, and it's, it's broke because we have not been managing our money right. I, I will, I, I say it like this, Compton is like a, a person that won the Lotto, that instead of cashing out, they get a check every month. But somehow, every month, they living from check to check.
And they blow, yeah.
Because they blowing it, blowing it on whatever you want to blow it on, and there's so many different things we blow it on, but you don't manage your money right. So every time we look up and try to get something done, it's like, damn, we gotta find money for this, gotta find money for that, you gotta find money for this. But we blow money just on some, some ridiculous things.
Well, we should, we should at least be able to have the gyms open for these kids.
Okay, so, yeah, you want to say that?
We should at least.
It's nothing to get a lock, right, open up the door, but now we talking about insurance, and I'm not, I'm not making much excuse.
The city, I'm saying, the city already got insurance.
I'm telling you though, this is stuff we pay for, or don't pay for.
Yeah.
So, again, when I say stuff we pay for, don't pay for, Dollar High doesn't have an elevator right now, it's not working, it's only because we didn't pay a bill. Like, this is stuff that, like, you said, it's just a bill, somehow, stuff is slipping through the cracks, it don't happen. So, we talking about insurance, we talking about, um, uh, uh, employment, getting somebody up there, we talking, uh, security, all these different things that, you know, you might want to add to, it's not just like opening up the door. So, not to make an excuse, just saying, this is a thing that we gotta consider. Now we got some people that's in parks that might say, man, I'm scared to go up to the parks, we ain't been up to the parks in two, three years because of the pandemic, and now we got an element at the park that I'm intimidated by, now whether that be real or not, it's legitimate, it's a legitimate excuse that we can't ignore.
But at the end of the day, if you got somebody that's intimidated, then you gotta get somebody that is not intimidated, because the show must go on. The show can't, the show can't stop just because I'm scared to go to the park, we can't, you know what I'm saying? Take everything away from all the kids just because I'm scared.
And that's just me and you talking, that's us keeping it a buck, of course, we don't, we don't send the right person up there and be like, man, you handling it, right?
They know, man, they know how to find the right people.
Now we're talking, now we're talking about unions, and we're talking about people getting suspended, not being.
But if you don't want to do your job, then your ass fired.
It's not that easy.
What you need?
As, 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 as simple as it sounds like that, it's just not that easy.
Say, I'm hired, I'm hired to go open a gym and work the park, you know what I'm saying, now, either I'm gonna do the job, or I'm not gonna do the job.
Now, this is what happens, pandemic comes, they tell you, don't even go up there no more, right? Alright, now you working wherever you working, and pandemic's starting to be over with, and you like, alright, well, we need to go back up to the parks. Now you back at these parks, and you, you not familiar with the faces no more, or, or you say you're not familiar with the faces no more. Because you got comfortable in the AC in the building, and it's kind of different going over to the parks, so now, like, you know, so this is your, this is your lane. Like, damn, I'm, I'm, I'm not safe up there, you know, this shooting happened, that shooting happened, and can we deny that? We can't, we can't deny that, it has been shootings at the park, it has been robberies, it has been rapes at the park, we can't deny it, so what they say.
There was shootings at the park before the pandemic.
But when you talk about a, a city and a business, they ain't talking about liability.
Yeah.
And that's a whole nother issue that we got to fight through.
At the end of the day, they got to figure out, man, this been shit going on since I was a kid, going to Wilson Park, it's been shit going on at the park. It's been shootings at the park, at every park in Compton.
Yeah.
So you can't, you can't use that as no excuse, because it's been going on forever.
From a street standpoint, from where we come from, there's no excuse, from a legal, corporate, business standpoint?
So what they say, so what they say, so, so?
Not to say it's not happening, it still happening, it just takes, it's a process, it's not like, go over to parks, and the parks are open, it's a process now because we got red tape.
They need to figure out.
No, it's happening, it's happening, the parks will be open before the end of the year, I mean, some of the parks are open now, but they'll be fully staffed, staffed and everything, probably by the end of the year.
Okay.
And, you know, so it's not to say it ain't happening.
We need that, because if you don't have that, you know what I'm saying, the kids.
Oh, it's going down.
Yeah.
It's going down, and like, and like we said, it's, these kids are the future.
The kid that's interested in baseball, football, or something, man, you know what I'm saying, they ain't got, they ain't got nowhere to play it. So instead of them playing baseball and football, damn, let me hang out with Tommy.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying, damn, Tommy hanging out with the big homies.
Yep.
Fucking next thing you know, cuz, I want to get put on, bam, you know what I'm saying?
Baseball is so farming the mind.
Baseball gone.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, baseball out the window, you know what I'm saying?
We see it happen, we see it happen.
Man, I got so many homies and brothers that I know, homie, that was straight professional material, on, baseball, football, basketball, you know what I'm saying? But it's that, this thing that they call gang banging fucked over, man, causing their lives, homie, causing their careers.
How's my brother?
You know, end up in, end up dead and, or in penitentiary.
Yeah, I, I, man, because in my family, it's, it's, we, we live and breathe it all the time, bro, we, we, we go through these, and that's why we passionate about it. Because we see it from a different standpoint, right? We done lived through it, we done seen it, we done seen it happen to the big homies, little homies, uncles, cousins.
See, it's crazy trying to convince somebody something that's really, you should be able to see plainly, and they don't see it, like, when it's something, like, when we had started the gang intervention in Compton, man. Man, for like two, three years, man, we had this shit good, man, you know what I'm saying? We had it to where the murder rate might have went, I might have went from fucking fifty murders to, to like fifteen or twenty.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm saying? It was still murders, but they went down, down, damn, every year they was going down, but you had haters in there, you know what I'm saying? That, that blocked them from, you know what I'm saying, keeping the program afloat, you know what I'm saying? I'm like, how, I'm like, how can you not vote for, how can you vote against something that's helping the community, that's saving lives? That's something I didn't understand, man, how could you be so selfish to vote again? I could see if the program wasn't doing nothing, but it was data, what they like to say.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying, that showed, you know what I'm saying, how the, how the shooters went down, how the violence went down, and how the murders went down.
You gotta, you gotta talk to that, to people that value that, if a person don't value that.
But how could, how could you vote against that when you see that it helped?
Because you don't have no value in it, because you personally don't have no value.
You shouldn't even be on, in, you shouldn't even be on the council, period, if you gonna vote against that.
So then that go back to us, because who voted, and who didn't?
Yeah.
So, it's a hundred thousand people, look, it's a hundred thousand people.
I know, I know what you finna say.
Yeah, it's a hundred thousand.
You know what I'm saying, but like, when, when the mayor was getting voted in, she was, she was winning with like twenty-two thousand votes, or was it twenty-two hundred? Yeah, twenty-two hundred vote, huh, you in a city of Compton with damn near a hundred thousand people, and you win the mayorship with twenty-two hundred votes.
Bro.
You know what I'm saying, and that's crazy.
Yeah, yeah, but your average voter is sixty-five years old, but your average age is twenty-five, thirty years old, so by definition, young people.
Well, you know what I'm saying, well, when you, whenever, when you get ready, you know what I'm saying, to step up to that mayorship, man, I got a plan.
But see, we, we need that plan implemented now, because we need everybody engaged now, it's not just election time.
You know, because see, I could, with my plan, because I was gonna have somebody running, what my plan really was, is to go to every park in Compton, man, and have, and have a cookout at each, each separate park, man, and invite all the residents in that, in that area, and sign them up to vote, and every young person come up through there.
Don't be giving up all, uh, 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 don't be giving up the game, man.
I was, you, you told me, I was trying to tell you.
Don't be giving up the game, man.
Yeah, yeah, I got, I told you, I got a plan.
Yeah, nah, it's, but, but this, that's the thing, when you from the community, and you can move around in the community, you can do stuff like that.
Exactly.
You can do stuff like that.
You can go to anywhere, and they gonna, they gonna open up, help you receive you, will open up.
And so let me, and, and let me help you break down, like, the road to how we get there. So, on the, on the November ballot, just coming up November, our residents get to vote, if we gonna sink our election with the national election, or we gonna stand, and have our standalone election. Let me explain to you what that's, what that is, when you have a national election, elections are on the even year numbers, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two, all the even years. Um, when you have those elections, you got all these, uh, uh, cities and counties, they put money in for the election, so everybody throwing in fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, whatever the pot is. And so now you got Lynn Williams, and you got Cardena Carson, all these people saying, alright, bam, we, we got an election, alright? Now, we spend maybe a hundred thousand dollars for that, when you have your standalone election, where ain't nobody else sharing an election, it's just you? You pay for the election, because it's just you, that means you getting all the ballot boxes, you getting all the, 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 uh, the ballots printed up, it's all on you.
You doing everything.
So that's a million dollars, bro, we have our own standalone, standalone elections on odd years, so twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three, not with everybody else, so we pay a million dollars for that. Now, when the president ran for the United, the president ran for office, thirty thousand people from Compton voted, when the mayor ran one year later, seven thousand people voted.
Yeah.
We paid a million dollars for that drop-off.
More than drop-off.
So, November, we get a chance to say, sink our shit, sink ours with everybody else.
It would make sense to go with everybody else.
It makes sense for someone that wants to see a voter increase.
Yeah, it makes sense.
For that, for that person that wants to see a voter increase, but for the person that is control, is good with controlling the hundred votes that's out there, they don't like that.
That's, that's personal, let, let the people decide.
But are y'all gonna be, are y'all gonna know to go out and vote in November to make that change?
But everybody, you guys put it out there.
That's what, that's why we talking now.
You know what I'm saying?
That's why I'm talking to your audience.
We got to put it out there.
It's about it coming out in November, and we need people to vote to change our election to the next cycle, that's gonna give me an extra year on the council, it's gonna give everybody an extra year on the council. We gonna push back a whole year, now we get more people to vote, and, and it saves us millions of dollars over the next, over the year.
That's, really, that should be a no-brainer.
It's a no-brainer.
It ain't, you know, it's a real, it's a no-brainer.
It's a no-brainer, bro, but we gotta engage to make the change, if we don't, we gonna lose that, and we gonna be, you know what I'm saying? So we, that's why I said, it ain't just for our election, it, it start now, because we gotta build up to this.
Yeah, we just gotta figure out, we gotta just figure out a way to keep putting these words out, putting the word out all around, man.
Gotta keep having these podcasts, gotta keep having those conversations, because, truth of the matter is, you got more influence on the generation than some people in City Hall.
Oh, yeah, without a doubt, you know, without a doubt.
But why we not using that influence to better the community, or how, or do we not know how to, you know what I'm saying? Do we, do we have a structure?
That's, that's all I'm pushing on my platform.
Yeah.
Is bettering the community, coming together as one, you know what I'm saying, supporting each other, spending our money with each other.
Yeah.
Just like today, I'm, I'm gonna do another podcast later about these damn Asians, I ain't got nothing against them, but they coming out fucking community, and I'm tired of that cash-only shit. Y'all don't cash only nowhere else, you only want to say cash only where brothers and sisters is at, you can't go nowhere else in, in, in California where it ain't brothers and sisters, and they telling people cash only, you know what I'm saying, and that's real.
That's typically a tax issue.
You know?
Typically is a tax issue, that's why I don't want to pay taxes.
No, they just, they, no, they just, yeah, they greedy, I already know that for the tax, but still, why do you come at our community and do it, and you don't put a dime back in our community? Every dime that goes out of here with the, with the hair salons, the, the beauty salons, the, the doughnut shops, you know, all that, all that money, homie, that go in them places don't a dime circulate back in Compton, man?
So, then, then the conversation is, how do we make that change?
How do we get them out of here, we stop supporting them, if ain't nobody going buying their stuff, they gonna leave, and when they leave, we put the same business back that they left with. If it's a hair salon, we put a hair salon back there, if it's a nail shop, we put a nail shop back there with sisters in it. You going, oh, they, no, none of them hiring nobody, but I own Asians, the only thing is in them shops, man, they don't hire no brothers and no sisters, but they come and get all our fucking money. It ain't about being racist, it's about being fair.
Nah, I mean, ain't, ain't nothing wrong with speaking your truth, bro.
You know what I'm saying, and that's real, they, they, and you know, they be sitting right there, doing your toes, talking about you like a dog, smiling at each other, and you don't even know.
And I can't speak to it, because I have no idea.
Yeah, I do, I didn't, I know, I didn't, I should get my, he didn't have it every Friday.
Yeah.
I done been all through all them joints, you know what I'm saying, and I know how they be disrespectful, motherfuckers, soon you walk in the store, they want to look at you and follow you, come on, man. Just, just that feeling that they give you, homie.
So that's, that's, but, but then who fault is that? Is that your fault for, not you, but is that your fault for continue to go to that place and, 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 and?
Yeah, it's my fault if I keep going.
That's, that's our fault.
If I keep going, yeah, it's our fault, yeah, that's why I say.
Truth of the matter, and I say this all the time, bro, if we want to change the streets, we can.
Yeah, without a doubt.
We can, we can.
Without a doubt.
We can do it, if you, if we wanted to bring the, the, the gang violence down, bro, if we wanted to, to, uh, public safety, it's, it's, it's with the gangs, it's with the gangs, it's with the streets. You gotta tie them in.
Yeah, gotta be with the streets, but everything is all about finance, though, everything, you can't do nothing without money.
You right.
You know what I'm saying, we got all these actors, entertainers, athletes, all, and they, they donate money every year, but they don't donate it to the hood. They don't come down here and see what the hood need, they listen to these practices they got, as they, you know what I'm saying? Uh, what they call them, they tax guys, or what, whatever the hell they call them, they tell them, oh, donate here, well, donate here, no, motherfucker, I'm going to the hood and donate, you know?
And, and granted, that's because we need to, we need to talk to them, but we don't have our stuff together, what they donating to.
No, this, this, no, it's certain, it's certain, it's some of us that got all shit together.
I ain't saying that we don't, in, 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 in general, but it's, 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 I, I'm gonna speak for the things that came through here, I done seen celebrities walk away and say, this is a mess. I'm not finna give my money to this, because it's just a mess, I ain't finna deal with that.
You see, this here gonna stay a mess until you get the right people in it.
But then, it, 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 we have to work on all these different levels at the same time, because we're destroyed all across the board, so, yeah, we gotta work in here, we gotta work on our relationships with those celebrities, and be like, yo, come back to the hood, and do your part. We also gotta work within our own neighborhoods, and we don't need no handouts for everything, we hustle for everything.
See, just like me, on my platform right now, homie, on my platform, O G E N T TV, we raising money to open up, you know what I'm saying, a vocational center. And we doing it, we, we trying to do, we doing it ourselves, by everybody, I'm trying to get everybody on the platform to donate twenty to forty dollars or better for a year.
Yeah.
And after that year, you know what I'm saying, we gonna calculate that money, find a building, and we gonna move forward, and we gonna run the program, and once we run the program, then we can go to people, and, or different organizations, or, uh, different grants, and, and present the data, and show them this what we done did.
Yeah.
That's how, you know what I'm saying, because it's all about show and tell, I can come tell you the best plan in the world, but if we ain't got no money, no, without no, 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 nothing to show. But, yeah, without nothing to show that we can do it, or we done did it, oh, you gonna tell me, okay, go run it, and if it's successful, then you got the money.
Yeah.
You know, so I ain't sitting around waiting and asking for nothing.
And, and it just ain't be you, just what you doing, the Monas need to do the same thing, the Ludus need to do the same thing, the AMs, the, you know what I'm saying? We need to go through there, and if everybody's doing what you doing, and we got every section taking care of their section, then we got a whole.
But see, my section with me, my, my, my platform is everybody, because I got the AMs, I got Ludus, I got Campanellas, I got Kelly Parks, I got, I got, I got everybody be on my platform.
Yeah, but that's on your platform, but that mean, that don't, that don't mean your section.
It's for everybody, though.
But your section gotta do their part.
Yeah, 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 without a doubt.
Just like my section gotta do their part, and all these other sections gotta do their part, because if we, we looking for change, you can't be the only change agent out, in, in the town. Or on the east side, we need more change agents out there, so, because it's too much work on just you, that's gonna be overwhelming, bro.
We on some real shit, but we need, we need to get to one of the main topics or not.
Yeah, we over here talking all kinds of.
We wanna, we, you know what I'm saying, we talking about changing the Will Park, the Wilson Park, I ain't got a problem with that, he's a white man anyway, I ain't tripping, you know what I'm saying? But, uh, tell them about who we want to change. You know what I'm saying, but, uh, tell them about who we wanna change, you know, change the name to, and why?
Well, first, I will say that, um, Wilson Park was named after a, a, a family, a white family that had been here in Compton. They owned the land, and I think it was back in, uh, what was it? Back in nineteen thirty-three is when, um, is when they, they beaded the land over. And, and they made it Wilson Park, a couple of years after that, and again, it was, it was a family that owned the land. So, we didn't have, and it took me a while to figure that out, so we don't have no ties to Wilson. You know what I'm saying? So I'm like, alright, well, what we, what we, what, what can we do at Wilson Park? So one guy, first, let me tell you this, everybody in Compton pride, we all got pride, Compton pride all over the place. Compton, Compton, east side, west side, you know, we, we known for all that, you know? You can go anywhere in the world, be like, this Compton, and it means something to somebody. But, we, our pride is typically based in gangs, N W A, old English letters. You know what I'm saying, that's, that's typically where our pride come from, but Compton has a hell of a history. We got some of the most, the richest history in, in the country, honestly, in just this one city. Compton produced a lot of firsts, and if we, and we talking black, we, we, we pro black. Compton had the first Black mayor, and he was a son of a slave, so he was only one generation from being a slave. That, that one slave, or that, um, that black man hired several other black people to run the city. Monroe Smith was one of them, Monroe Smith was, um, the first, uh, uh, fire captain that started the Mississippi. Firefighters are, fire department's known to be the, the, the good old boys, that's where all the white boys are at. It's hard for black people to get into fire, they make a lot of money, you don't have to be highly educated to do it, and you can make a good living. Working three days a week, four days a week, and it wasn't, wasn't something that we got into. When Monroe Smith came, he came. This, yep, this is Monroe Smith right here. Monroe Smith came, um, back in the seventies, when it was, Monroe Smith started in nineteen seventy-one. Here in Compton, he went from nineteen seventy-one to nineteen ninety-three as the, um, the, the chief. With that, he brought in an E M T program, paramedic program, ambulance, arson program. Um, he rebuilt Station Three, which is the one in front of Gonzalez Park. So, he, that was, he, he rebuilt that, he had a fire explorer program, which took kids that was fourteen years old from the hood. Trained them up, so by the time they got to be eighteen, they were ready to be in service, ready to start a whole career as a firefighter. This was specifically for black people, now, yeah, it helped out Latinos as well, but he did this for us. You know what I'm saying, and, and, and with that, he set, he's, he set a precedence, because, again, we talking about the good old boys, this is the fire department. He got more than forty people, forty black people hired as battalion chiefs, captains, all across the country, dog. This, these jobs changes communities, these jobs changes families, we talking about getting people that's from the hood, and now putting two hundred thousand dollars in their pocket a year. That changes lives, bro, forty people, over forty people, it's forty-eight people on this list, might've been more than that, but that's all I got. Um, and, and he hired these people, got them trained up, and they are booming across the country, all over the place. That's black excellence for us, you know what I'm saying, this is giving our black people platforms. These people is people we should be acknowledging and recognizing through the city. We often say, hey, Douglas Dollar High, or Martin Luther King, or Caesar Child, those are the people that we sing praises to the most. But there's a lot of people here, there's a lot of stuff that ain't being acknowledged. This, this, this man has changed, like, I had firefighters, grown firefighters coming up here, them there in tears, telling me how much the man meant to them. How much he changed their lives. The man been gone before, I think he passed, he passed in, uh, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. So he just passed, not too long ago, it's like, right, right when the pandemic. Yeah, so, um, yeah, man, and, and, and so I wanted to bring that idea to, um, the community, to the fire department. To, to the hood, and just to see how y'all feel about switching over the park name from Wilson. To Monroe Smith, and I thought it was just important, man, and I tapped in with the actual hood, you know what I'm saying?
Ain't got a problem with it at all, I'm, I'm hollering at the homies, I'm, you know what I'm saying, the homies, the, the homies ain't really, shouldn't have a problem with it, because it's. It's gonna be, you know what I'm saying, under a, a brother's name, that really meant something to Compton, that made a big impact in Compton. You know what I'm saying, and like our neighborhood, the park is not, our neighborhood is not na, is not named after the park, so that ain't no significance at all.
Yeah, and that, and that's what I was, and that's what my thought was too, I'm like, alright, well, the hood not named after the park, you know, should be solid, but I don't know, cause I don't know the history. And it'd be wrong for me to just assume the history, you know what I'm saying, so, let me tap in, you know what I'm saying, and, uh, I wanna see, see how they, how, how everybody feel about it. You know what I'm saying, cause it's gonna be a change, and it's not, it ain't going back to Wilson, this is, this gonna be this. So, um, we, and, and, we're probably a few months, a couple of months away from it, but it's, it's, we gonna start the process.
You know what I'm saying, cause we, we gotta showcase our brothers, and that, listen, man, I be, I say on my podcast all the time, man. These young brothers and sisters, homie, they ain't got no reason on earth to, to never hold their heads down, man. You know what I'm saying, I don't care who you amongst, what white people you amongst, homie, we kings and queens, man, we creators, man. Most of the shit on earth, we created it, you know what I'm saying, but more, more, damn near all of it, they took it from us and act like they created it. They stole history, they stole everything, man, and I tell them, man, they didn't, it ain't nothing on this earth, homie, that they can do to us no more. They didn't drug us, they didn't, they didn't hung us, they didn't burned us, they didn't droned us, they didn't shot us, they, they, man, they didn't tarred us, homie. And we still strong, homie, we still here, you know what I'm saying? At the end of the day, you ain't, ain't never hold your head down, that's some real shit.
Yep, that's a honey right there, man, and that's, and so, doing stuff like this preserves our history. We don't know, we don't know who Wilson, respectfully, I don't know who Wilson is, he could've been a great person. Could've been a great person.
Yeah, he could've been a great person, then again, they could've been some, some foul people, you know, and we don't know that.
We don't.
They could've been foul.
I mean, Compton had the K K K on the, on the east side.
All that, you know what I'm saying, so we, we really don't know.
However, we know this man did.
He did, yeah.
Wonderful things, some great things, somebody we can uplift, and, um.
I'm just, listen, man, our history, man. Shit have me frustrated, homie, because it's just so much these youngsters don't know, man. They ain't like it was when we was coming up, man, you know what I'm saying? These youngsters these days, homie, they don't know nothing, about nothing, about no kind of history, homie. American history, black history, no kind of, these youngsters don't know nothing.
But why is it important to them?
You know what I'm saying?
Why should they care?
We gotta make it important to them, man, we gotta show them, the demand, this is shit you need to know. At the end of the day, I'm just saying, like, like I say, look, Martin Luther King and Malcolm X and them did what they had to do, homie. It was their time. I feel, homie, in my heart, seriously, it's our time, homie, to do something, homie, because these generations behind us, homie. They don't have the knowledge, no kind of knowledge at all, or the will, homie. Or, man, they don't have, they don't have the knowledge or the will, homie, to fight the power.
So, this the thing, everybody got their own, uh, uh, set of skills, their skillset, you know what I'm saying? Every generation got a certain skillset, the generation, by honest, they got a skillset too, we just gotta know how to utilize that skillset to benefit the, the overall goal. We, 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 we real good with separating ourselves, you know what I'm saying?
That's been the plan since they took us off the boat. I know, but they, but now, but they put that plan, they put that in our head, that divide and conquer, that's what they do. They know if we unify, homie, it's a rap.
But even in our conversation just now, we was like, hey, but youngsters don't know nothing. But that, right there, will distance the youngsters away from you. And that ain't what we need, we need to take whatever their skillset is, whatever that might be, it is, no, it is.
These youngsters, look, man, I've been out here with, all they wanna do is get out, drink that lean, smoke that weed.
Not all of them. And that, we can say same about some all days.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking all about the, both, those G's, the most of motherfuckers my age and over, if they ain't conscious by now, they gone, so we ain't. Hey, if they ain't conscious by now, it's a rap for them, you know what I'm saying?
But what I'm saying, is we, we, every generation got the same group.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We gonna have our ones that's gonna go heavy on the drugs.
But still, though, in our generation, but, in our generation, homie, we always had somebody that was, these youngsters ain't nothing like.
It's di, it's different, I agree with you.
It's way different, man. I'm gonna tell you the main reason why.
You know, you're talking about your kids.
I know it, you know the main reason why it's fucked up, though? In every neighborhood, is because they didn't grow up together. They don't got their love, and they, I, my homies, I grew up on the sandbox from elementary school, man. These dudes coming in the hood at nineteen, twenty, twenty-five, seventeen, from somewhere else, and we don't, we ain't got a clue. About who they really are, you know what I'm saying? So, that, that's, that's a big difference.
Yeah, that's a, that's, that's a huge difference.
So, I, I ain't, I ain't, I ain't so quick to pull a gun out and kill Ms. Maybe's son, cause I grew up with him, and I know him, and I love their family. You know what I'm saying, but these dudes, they just came around, they, soon they getting mad or whatever, they wanna kill each other, cause they don't know each other.
You know, had no, no emotional connection.
So it's a, it's a big difference, a real big difference, man, but at the end of the day, homie.
That, but that big difference.
All that can be dealt with.
Yeah, it can.
It ain't, it ain't nothing that can't be dealt with, but that, but we, you can't do nothing without no finances, homie. I can go talk my ass off, I can go, I can go, say you a gang bang, I pull you up, I'm like, come on, homie, cause this how I get out, come on, homie, roll with me for the day. I'm gonna show you some grown man shit, you know what I'm saying, I got him rolling with me, pulling up a different spot, showing him grown man shit. I'm talking to him, telling him, you know what I'm saying, about the past, and how this shit started, you know what I'm saying, and all, all these fucking fifty, over fifty years. Guess what, we ain't accomplished shit. We ain't gang banging, we ain't achieved shit, same, we still got the same enemies. They still there, more enemies, they still there, though, but we still here. We ain't checked them down and ran them off, they ain't shut us down and ran us off. So what the fuck is we keep killing each other back and forth for, and they ain't nothing, never gonna change? You know what I'm saying, I can do all that, and he agree with it, and everything, but at the end of the day, when I take him back. He gotta go back and do what he do, cause I ain't got nothing to offer him financially. I can't say, come on, I got this vocational school, we gonna pay you to go, and, and, and when you get out, we gonna get you a job. You get you a job, and once you learn the skill all the way, you open your own business, we gonna help you. I, you know, that's my, see, that's, that's, that's what I'm on. But, like I say, I can't, I can do my part on that, but I, when it come to me saying, that's why you need to leave this alone. And this what I got for you, I can't say this what I got for you. You know what I'm saying? Yeah, so, yeah, so, you see, that's, that's the problem.
Yeah, but, so we gotta get in a position.
Yeah, exactly.
Gotta offer something.
Exactly.
So, it's, it's, so what you do, you can't wait for the handout, we gotta figure out how we gonna make it.
That's why we trying, that's why I'm trying to raise the money through my nonprofit, so, you know what I'm saying? I, you know, cause like I say, ain't nobody gonna give you nothing if you ain't did nothing yet. So we raise the money and do something, and we can prove that we did something, and, and they gonna be all here. Take, you know, cause see, I'm trying to lay foundations in all fifty-one states, all, all over the country with my G Rider movement. See, we got a movement, I wanted, and, and what I tell them, this is a big thing on, on my platform. We got so many people that know so much stuff, that we all can help each other. I'm in California, I, I, I'm in California, oh, I need a brake job, I need my brakes done, bam, any G riders in California? That's close to me to do brakes, see, that's the kind of shit I'm trying to do, man, I don't, I don't want you to do it for free. But we gonna help you, and we gonna do it cheaper than whatever it's gonna get dead, or we can do it for free, depends on how it is. You know what I'm saying, see, that's, I'm, that's how I'm trying to unify, that's how I'm trying to unify, and you know what I'm saying, and push this G rider. Man, I'm on some more, I'm on some different stuff than these other platforms, homie, you know? But we can do that, you know what I'm saying, in all fifty states, cause like I say, homie, we start at the local level, homie. And we vote people in positions of power like us, so we can be the ones making the decisions. We vote people in, and at their local level, till we get strong enough to vote people in at the national level.
Now, just, but, but know that, that you gotta, that's, that's, that's a daily thing, it ain't just for elections. It's a, it's on, it's on the regular basis.
Yeah, it's on the reg, yeah, without a doubt.
Had these conversations regularly, keeping people engaged.
But, man, homie, listen, man, God put this on me.
It's, it, no, I see, I see, and, and I see the passion, you gonna get it done? I just throw my little two cents in there, man, I, and whatever part I can rope, uh, play to, to help the movement up, and I'm, I'm down for it. Let me know, I mean, we can sit down and have these conversations, map things out, plan things out, and eventually start bringing those, those resources to the city. And try to make, try to, try to make something of it, so you got me, for sure, hands down, I said on camera, where it's.
You know, the city, it's, cause the center ain't no just, the center is gonna be, you know what I'm saying, like for mentoring. You know what I'm saying, it's gonna be like, they, after school, they ain't got nothing to do, or do their homework, they can come into the center, we gonna have about at least fifteen laptops. And they can get on the laptops, and it's also gonna be like for when, say like Santana and, 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 uh. Kelly Park get into a dispute, this, come on, homie, come to the center, ain't nothing gonna happen to nobody here, this is where we can come and talk shit out. You know what I'm saying, this is gonna be where we can mediate right here, you know?
And I think that right there, bro, is gonna be huge, just being able to have that element. We can, alright, it's the issue between these two cats, instead of making it whole hood, then it's, come have a conversation, and, and let's figure it out.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's, that, that type of stuff, say live.
You know, but like, man, we got to, see, we always inherited ideas, homie. You know what I'm saying, we always inherited answers, cause we lit the shit, but we just ain't had the funding.
But, even, even beyond funding, sometimes that's a conversation.
But we still do what we do, just like right now, if I know that two certain hoods is into it, and ain't nobody dead yet. It's just been a fight, or it could've been a stabbing, or it could've been a shooting, but ain't nobody dead. You know what I'm saying, we still can step in, and man, y'all come and let's, let's talk, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think that's gonna be amazing, man, that's something that we don't.
When it, when it come to, to the lives and the kid, it ain't about the money. Well, me, me, us being able to step in and resolve a, a, a problem with, with, with different hoods, that ain't about the money. You know what I'm saying, that's just about us loving y'all, and we don't want nobody dead.
Yeah, 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 that, but, but, I'm, I'm, I stand behind that, bro, that was, that's, that's gold right there, because, again, we ain't having conversations as black men. As soon as, as soon as we get mad, we.
I tell you, listen, I, I'll be on my podcast, and I tell them, man, look, man. Ninety-five percent of the shit that people dying over can be talked out, you know what I'm saying, for real. Ninety-five percent of the shit that people get killed over could be talked out, man, and I know that for a fact.
I know, we, we see, we, it's, it's a daily thing.
Yeah, sometimes you just, people just got to, so, cause a lot of people just react, eh, just an instant reaction.
We don't know how to communicate, bro.
Yeah, it ain't no communicate, yeah, that's why you just react, because you don't know how to communicate, all you know, the way you know. The way you learned how to handle it is just through violence, so by you not knowing how to communicate, you gonna do what you know how to do.
Only thing you know how to do.
Exactly, but if it's somebody be like, wait a minute, homie, hold up, check this out, talk to me, shit, you know? You know what I'm saying, that's, that make a big difference, man.
Yeah, and then it's respected too, cause once you get, once you get past that part, you're like, damn, eh, you know, you, you, you look at it from a different standpoint. Once you, once the beef is squashed, everybody look at it from a different standpoint.
Man, I, it's like, man, it's like, man, it's dudes that I didn't try to kill, homie, and they didn't try to kill me, homie. And we best buddies, with nothing but love and respect, and you know why? Because when we was in that bullshit, we didn't allow ourselves, or give ourselves a chance to even try to know each other. Because it wasn't nothing to know, is you a blood and I'm a Crip and it's on, you know what I'm saying, I don't care who he is, if he got on red, I'm getting him. If you, he got on blue, he gonna get me, we didn't allow ourselves, you know, because we was fucked up in the head like that, that that's the enemy. He red enemy, blue enemy, why? We ain't, we just, we just stopped and say why? Now, for real, homie, okay, you know what I'm saying? We don't ask why, you know what I'm saying, that's why I be saying it, right now, the day, that's why I always bring up, and that's, that's my main point. That I push every day, over fifty years of history, and we ain't accomplished shit. If I can just keep putting that in people's heads, you know what I'm saying, fifty years of histories and death, and pain, and suffering. Mothers crying, and men, brothers dying, and. And we ain't accomplished shit.
I act like it's all the time, like, yo, who winning?
If somebody was gonna win, I know we would have been won, so if we, and we ain't won, it can't be won, it can't be won.
And who, who winning? Ain't nobody winning.
They ain't got to kill us no more, they letting us kill ourselves, they winning.
We on autopilot.
Yeah, they winning. But, you know, we good.
Let's, let's, let's change the narrative, man, keep having these conversations, and shit, we see what we can do, bro, anything I can do to help change the narrative. You know what I'm saying, and play a part in your movement.
And same here, whatever I can do to help you in yours, homie.
It's, it's gonna be some stuff, so, I'm calling on you.
Yeah, I'm saying, they already know, I was right there for the mayor, homie, you know, I went against my own people, my own people was telling me, man, fuck her. She ain't shit, she ain't gonna do, I'm like, man, listen, man, give a woman a chance, fuck that, I'mma ride with her. I rode with her to the end, homie, and all we got was fucked, homie, and I really felt bad and looked like a fool going against my people when they telling me. But I'm trying to, she being a sister, a young sister, you know what I'm saying, and I'm thinking she gonna do what she say she gonna do. So, you know, I'm trying to, you know, I don't wanna just jump in there and then just turn on her, and she ain't gave me a reason to turn, you know what I'm saying? But at the end of the day, homie, shit, it didn't.
And I don't know all the details of that, and I, I heard a little bit about it, man, I, I hate the way that turned out, man, but.
You know, cause side as we were, we supposed to still be kicking in and talking and being friends right now, you know what I'm saying, but the man, she proved. She proved a hell of a point to me, man, you know what I'm saying, what motherfuckers all, what motherfuckers always be saying, homie. Motherfucker tell you what, whatever you wanna hear, until they get what they want, you know what I'm saying? And I'mma, I'mma go out on a limb, one more motherfucking time.
Can rock with me?
And I'mma rock with you, homie, you a young brother, I just can't, it's just like.
It's gonna be different though.
I can't be mad at every fucking, every motherfucking Latino, because I had a problem with one. That's just the way I live my life, homie, you got people that one race, one person out of the race do something, and they hate the whole race. See, I, I'm not like that, I can't, just cause one person did it, don't mean the next one will, so, it's like this with me, it's like. I tell people all the time, my people be tell, he gotta earn my respect, I'm like, listen, homie, respect is given. I respect every, every man until he prove himself different, you don't have to earn respect, you have to earn trust. But you don't have to earn respect, you supposed to give every man his respect, no matter if he's weaker than you, well, if he gay, whatever he is. I give every man their respect, homie, you know what I'm saying, because that, that's just the way I was raised.
That's how it's supposed to be though, and it take you a long way.
If we respect each other, homies, we could go so fucking forward, man. You know, I tell people, you don't gotta be my best friend, you ain't got to be my buddy, none of that, all we got to have is a mutual respect, homie. And, and just keep moving, you know what I'm saying? We don't gotta be enemies, for what? I don't want no, I don't want one enemy, huh, for what, you know what I'm saying? We don't have to be, we black men.
It's experience talking, you weren't always like that, you weren't always this refined.
I was on that front line, homie.
I know who you are.
God changed me, man.
Yeah, but it, I mean, but it be those experiences, though. Life experiences are changing, you know what I'm saying, and, and thankfully, it didn't kill you.
Not, man, that's my only body grace to God, that's the only reason why I'm here, that's why I wear this right here, this anchor. With Jesus on it, Jesus is my anchor, Jesus hold me down, man, that's why I wear this, man. And you know, now even on my channel.
And so, we can get people to make those same changes without having that experience, that's what you wanna do. Cause everyone can't go, everybody can't live through your experience.
That's why it's history, that's why it's history, you know what I'm saying? That's why it's a history, when we was coming up, it wasn't no history for us to look back on to see what was gonna happen, cause we was the ones making this. We was the blueprint, but now, over fifty years, you got, you got over fifty years of history to look back on. And analyze, and study, and you gonna come up with the same thing I come up with. We ain't did shit. That's real, all, all these years, we ain't accomplished nothing, man.
That's a lot of fighting to be.
That's a lot of fighting to be in the same spot, man, damn. My God, that's just like, you know what I'm saying, the north and the south, uh, motherfucking, uh, uh, Korea. You know what I'm saying, they in the same, the same spot, same position, ever since the war, and now when I move the forth, front of foot.
But a lot of people done died.
So, yeah, we gotta, man, but I gotta say, I'm with you, homie, you know, whatever, whatever you need me for, homie, all you gotta do is hit me, I'm available, I'm coming.
So, give me, get back to me, and let me, let me, let me know what's up with this, uh, the Monroe Smith, let me know how, how the homies feel about that. Um, and then we, we, we get that passed, bro, I'd love to see y'all there in support. United, um, in the perfect world, we'll get it done in February, if everybody in the greens, and we solid with it, it'll, it'll happen in February.
Yeah, yeah, I'mma, I'mma definitely get it, the homies, I don't see why it should be a reason, you know, so, we ain't got no tie, no tie to that park, to the name. Get to, we got ties to the park, but not to that name, you know what I'm saying?
No doubt, man, well, shoot, man, I appreciate you taking the time to holler at me, man, like I said, just. Bouncing around through the, through, through your section, man, and see how the, how the youngsters feel about it, the OGs.
Youngsters ain't gonna care one way or one way or another, cause they, they mind ain't even that advanced to even contemplate what the hell going on. I just get at you, you know what I'm saying, the OGs, the OBGs, and OTGs, and.
Let's make, let's make it happen, man, love to see y'all there, when it, when it all go down.
Yeah, yeah, without a doubt. Man, no problem, baby, with my love and respect, man, that's your boy G. That G Rider shirt, baby, this your, this your boy G from OG ENT TV. Coming at y'all straight out of Compton, we in Compton City Hall right now, I love my city, whatever I can do to help my city. And to help any city, I'mma do it, you know what I'm saying, cause like I say, it's all about love. And like I tell y'all all the time, if you see your brother and sister walking down the street, walking through the mall, or anywhere, don't turn your head away from them. If you see them and y'all lock eyes, speak, just say hi or hello, if they don't speak back, so what? If we keep speaking enough, they gonna start speaking back, man, it's all about us, baby, you know what I'm saying? If we can't do it, it can't be done, man.
Bread, black love.
Don't nobody, man, don't, hey, homie, don't nobody really give a fuck about us, homie, but us, and sometime we don't care about each other. So, we got to do better, so, hey, this your boy G, and like I always said, then to my show, let me make my pledge. I pledge to never, to never disrespect, hurt or harm another brother or another sister, or anybody for that matter, because at the end of the day. We all we got, when you know better, do better, that's our motto, this your boy G, and I'm up out this bitch, later.